This conference will now be recorded.
Work sessions are an opportunity for board members to discuss issues informally with staff and invited guests. The board encourages members of the public to attend work sessions and listen to the discussion, but there is generally no opportunity for public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board are welcome to do so during the board's regularly scheduled meetings held twice monthly. And we've got the rest of the commission here, Commissioner Toyoka, Commissioner Banks, Mr. Thompson. Let's jump right into our topics. The first one is the Public Health Update. Do we have?
Chair Quayle, Public Health Director Wallach had another meeting at this time today, and unfortunately she's not able to be present for an update.
Okay, we will go ahead and move on. Commissioner Thompson?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just read this horrifying bit of reportage in the newspaper, The Oregonian. They said, "This pandemic won't be over until everybody on earth is either infected or vaccinated or both." That isn't exactly an easy thing to contemplate, and I was looking forward to hearing from our Public Health Director, but I just want to share that tidbit with my colleagues for their consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Sobbing, I have not read that article. I do want to say on behalf of Margot and the County Health Department how hard they have been working with the school districts to get kids back in school. She meets frequently with the superintendents. I know that working closely with the nurses to make sure that they're managing outbreaks and cases in the schools has been something that she's really focused on. She's also worked closely with the Chamber of Commerce. They're having their bridge run. And so they consulted with her about protocols and how that could be done safely. And I think they've put a good plan in place, but I just really appreciate all her efforts. It's been a, you know, she's worn many hats throughout this and all of the folks in public health have. But that county testing site, I just got off a meeting that it's been running very smoothly. I had a testimonial from someone that went out there to get a test, said that they just really appreciated the staff and how organized it was and how well it went. So that's just a real testament to our Public Health Department and staff and also to the hospitals that have been in coordination as a cooperative effort for the hospitals and for the Public Health Department. So, and thanks to National Guard, of course. National Guard presence has been very helpful both at Camp Reilia and at CMH in Providence where we've had some reinforcements. Anyway, we'll move on to our second topic, which is the Columbia River Estuary Study Task Force Habitat Restoration Program. We've got Tom Josephson that's joining us here. And I thought it would be great to have Tom kind of present about all, what all the Crest has been doing. It's really, and I see Denise is also here. I'll turn it over to maybe Denise first. Denise can introduce Tom and talk a little bit about what Crest has been up to. Denise?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm trying to get my camera on for you guys. Let's see, there we go. Great. Good morning and thank you for, thank you for the invitation to come and present. Tom is going, I'm gonna steal a little Tom show here, but Tom, the presentation you're about to see is one that Tom has given to the Northwest Power Council. We give a presentation to them every few years because of the funding that we receive through the Bonneville Power Administration. And, and so we provide them with a presentation to particularly their science review team at the Northwest Power Council. We're not the only entity that, what they call a project sponsor for BPA. All of the project sponsors who receive BPA money for fish habitat projects present. And, and then I, Tom and I talked and I thought it would be a great presentation to give to the Crest Council. And Chair Quayle represents Platte County. And Chair Spence from the Port Commission said this presentation might be a nice one to share with all of you. And so Chair Quayle invited us to come and present. And so Tom is gonna give an overview of our Habitat Restoration Program and share with you a lot of the projects that we've been doing over, since about 2013. That's the timeline that this presentation covers. And, and we're both here to answer questions. And so, yeah, Tom, I'll let you take it away from there unless there's anything before he gets started. All right, go ahead, Tom.
Great, thanks Denise. Hi, everybody. My name is Tom Josephson. As Denise said, I'm the Habitat Restoration Program Manager with Crest. So I oversee our habitat program within Crest and I manage the direct contract that we have with Bonneville Power to do floodplain restoration in the Lower Columbia River. Just real quick, can, let me make sure I'm in the, sorry, one second. I'll move some things around. Let's see, just to confirm, can folks see the slide in front of them? Yes, cool, thank you. Perfect. All right, well, I'll go ahead and get started. And, you know, this is a pretty informal presentation. Hopefully, there's some, there's some text throughout, but a lot of photos of what we do. And please just feel free to chime in with any questions or comments as I go through it. And of course, we'll have time at the end as well. So again, thank you again for the invite to present what we do at Crest on our habitat side. Let's go ahead and get started.
Hey, Tom, we can see both the slide that you're presenting and the next slide. I don't know if you have a different mode that you want to just show the one slide at a time?
Thank you, let's see here. Looks good.
That changed? Okay, cool. I think we, I think we got it. Thank you. So, like I said, we have, Crest has a direct contract with Bonneville Power to do habitat restoration within the Lower Columbia River. And so that's basically from Bonneville Dam all the way down to the mouth of the Columbia River, both the Oregon side and Washington side. And why we get funded by Bonneville is they're really trying to address these limiting factors for juvenile salmonids, which are on the, working their way from the headwaters with a board, out to the open ocean, and then of course, returning a few years later to spawn. And so the limiting factors that we're trying to address with our Habitat Restoration Program is a loss of historical floodplain, you know, through development, land use changes. A lot of the available floodplain of the Columbia River has been constrained. It's been confined by levees, dikes, different land uses, things like that. There's also considerations such as invasive species, contaminants. And then, of course, the big, the big one, which is already here and will continue to show really large impacts to the Lower Columbia estuaries, is climate change. And what kind of impacts that's gonna have on water level temperatures, water levels period, precipitation, all that good stuff, or bad stuff, rather. As I said, we're really trying to focus on the floodplain along the main stem Columbia River. It's been shown as critical habitat for these outmigrating juvenile salmonids. It's kind of the, the estuary has been called the nursery of the, of salmon life history. In other words, salmon are born in the headwaters, they're working their way down, they're small smolts. They're growing, they're ducking into these quieter floodplain areas to eat, eat different types of prey, to grow larger, and then on their journey out to the open ocean. And so it's really important to have these quieter backwater, wetlands, sloughs, freshwater lakes, those kind of things where, where they can kind of pop in and have different resting points. And again, this is outlined in various environmental documents through NOAA as well, excuse me, the National Marine Fisheries Services and other federal agencies, the importance of this estuary habitat. So what are we, what is Crest doing specifically? You know, as I said before, we're really trying to focus on that shallow water habitat adjacent to the Columbia River and all those areas of habitat that have been disconnected through the years. And we're also trying to adaptively manage these projects. In other words, lessons learned, restoration techniques that have worked or not worked, tweaking them, trying to learn, you know, as we put more and more projects on the ground, what's providing the overall greatest benefit for these juvenile fish. These, these slides are text heavy. I'm not gonna go through all of them, but we'll get to some photos soon enough. But basically, as part of this power planning review that Denise mentioned, you know, I had to outline the different goals and objectives that Crest has. And so, and we'll go through all these, but just kind of at a 20,000-foot level. You know, really, one of our primary goals is to just keep doing reconnection to the floodplain. And that means implementing one to two habitat restoration projects on the ground each year for the next five to six years, designing an additional one to three projects each year, and then really actively engaging with local landowners, private landowners, obviously, public land agencies and local governments throughout, throughout the process. As I mentioned before, one of our, another one of our big goals is to actively learn about our projects, what's working, what's not, what can be improved. And that means collecting different data sets, you know, fish use, vegetation response, water quality, other indicators which can help inform how the projects are functioning and, and really take those lessons learned and apply them to future projects. And I think a big, the last goal I'll go over, and this is a big one, is really just fostering and maintaining our relationships with various stakeholders. You know, Crest, we view our reputation as everything. And we have a really good, in our opinion, we think we have a good reputation within the communities along the Lower Columbia River. And we really want to do everything we can to protect that. And so that really means, you know, just meeting folks where they're at. And whether that's private landowners and really listening to them, hearing what they need for their land, what they want to do on their land, and seeing if we can fit that into a restoration project with them. Or, you know, working with local agencies such as Watershed Councils, Soil and Water Districts, Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, US Fish and Wildlife, other various entities, and really just trying to come up with projects that meet, meet not only landowner needs, but fish needs as well as other, other species of concern. And again, just really focusing on putting, putting a lot of good projects on the ground that have a lot of local support and being very cognizant of keeping those relationships strong. In terms of climate change, you know, this, as I said before, this is one of the, the big challenges that's gonna, that already is facing specifically the Lower Columbia River as well as the entire world. But one of the things that we're trying to be cognizant of is there's a few things we can do within our restoration designs to try to better, better prepare for, for climate change, higher floods, greater drought conditions. One of those techniques is when we are putting in a new bridge or culverts, we try to oversize the opening. So basically, when we're doing a, say, a culvert replacement, we have to meet certain fish criteria, certain opening for the width, the height, that kind of thing. We actually try to, when the cost is, is feasible, we actually try to oversize that opening. So it's not only meeting today's pathogen requirements, but it's also better accommodating future flood scenarios where we're gonna see, you know, drought conditions and the really heavy flooding, which could really overwhelm some of these systems. So trying to think not only what will meet the criteria today, but what, what will it look like 10 years from now as sea level increases and flooding becomes more frequent and those kind of things. We're also, when we're doing work in wetlands, we're trying to do wetland grading at a different elevation, different elevations. In other words, as waters rise and fall, there's a multitude of different elevations that, that not only fish, but deer and migratory waterfowl and all sorts of other wildlife can have access to depending on the time of year as well as flood conditions. And then within our planting plan, really trying to come up with more drought tolerant species as well as, you know, encouraging beaver where appropriate, encouraging beaver on the landscape to try to slow down that exchange between water in the wetlands and on the main stem Columbia.
Tom, Commissioner Thompson with a question, please?
Sure.
I went to school with an entomologist. He said, "Always consider what the insects have to say about this." I mean, do you contemplate those kinds of species as well in your work?
Yeah, that's very much sounds like something an entomologist would say. That's, that's a good statement. And I mean, specifically to what I was saying about salmonids, these, these insects are very important prey that the salmon and other native fish are feeding on. And so I would say, you know, we don't, I would say our projects are super geared towards the, towards the prey insects that are available, but it is part of the overall design. And I think an advantage, like looking at this, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this is a project. Can't remember if this is on Bear Creek or Ferris. When we do these channel connections and this marshplain grading, by doing that different elevational gradient, so instead of having like a steep sideslope, by having kind of a more gentler sideslope, we're, we're increasing the plant area, planting area, and therefore increasing areas where insects can establish and either attach to these wetland plants or go into the water, come out of the water, those kind of things. So I guess my long-winded answer is, we're not focused, you know, in the restoration designs. We don't necessarily have an insect list that we're targeting, but by doing some of these restoration approaches, we are providing a better habitat conditions for those insects to establish and to thrive and then ultimately get eaten. Don't tell your entomologist friend that we're trying to get them all eaten, but essentially that, that would be my answer. Does that, does that make sense?
That's, that makes sense. It's very responsive. Thank you.
Sure. So yeah, what have we done to date? And we've done this, you know, Crest has been, been around since the 70s. We've really been active in habitat restoration since the 2000s. And the last time we went through this review was in 2013. So the numbers, the metrics that I'm gonna give you, these are all from 2013 to current. We've done some projects before then, but the answer is we've done quite a bit. You know, when we do a project, we do all the design permitting, construction oversight, monitoring, all in-house. You know, we work with different partners, we hire out engineering firm, or engineering design to design firms, we hire out construction, earthwork, culvert removal to private contractors, typically local contractors, both in the North Coast as well as, you know, the Portland Vancouver area. But we do it all within-house in that we oversee every single step of the project. And to date, we've, we've worked in six of the eight reaches of the Lower Columbia River. Hopefully, we get to seven of eight here in the next few years. And really what that's meant is 20 on-the-ground projects done since 2013, reconnecting about 5,600 acres of floodplain habitat. And so that, this map is just kind of a geographic representation of all these areas. You can see it's a wide range from West Sand Island here, right at, basically at the mouth of the Columbia River, you know, all the way through Cathlament Bay, Westport Slough, Dibley, which is near Longview, and then a bunch up in the Savvy Island, Vancouver Lake area, and then our highest upriver project's government island, right by the 205 Bridge. So wide geographic distribution, again, both sides of the river, both Oregon and Washington, obviously, and just, just a nice dispersment. So now we'll get to some actual fun photos of what, what the heck these projects actually look like. But, you know, as part of our, all our projects, we're required to do fish salvage before we go to construction as well as protecting habitats. So usually means, you know, keep putting on the waders and salvaging any, any fish that might be in the work area, excluding them from the work area. So getting to do some, some fish captures, also some treperon captures and relocate, which is fun for protection. And then, you know, just, I'm gonna just kind of go through a bunch of metrics of what we've actually accomplished through those 20 projects. What that's meant is, you know, 62 new tidal reaches throughout the Columbia River, 8,700 linear feet of levee removed, reconnected back to the Columbia River, 22 culverts pulled out. These two culverts are from the John Day Project up on John Day River Road, which was completed last year by Crest and Platte County, Platte County Roads, Roads Permit. And so there's, this were these twin culverts that were underneath the road. We'll see what went in in a minute. So 22 culverts pulled out, four of these large water control structures pulled out, five new bridges put in, and the bridges range from like, kind of these more simpler Forest Service type bridges. This is actually on the Savvy Island Wildlife Area. We put in a couple there where you have kind of periodic maintenance needs to, this is that same John Day River Road where we pulled out the twin culverts. We put in, I believe it was a 50-foot bridge, you know, so basically massive improvement to the site, both from a habitat standpoint and a roadway side. Obviously, a lot more use on that. And then this is another example. This is on Savvy Island. We put in 96-foot-long bridge, you know, two lanes, bike lanes, the whole nine yards. So five new bridges, two box culverts constructed. And these are, both these examples are on the Washington side. We worked with Washita on several culvert replacements along Highway 401. So this picture, I believe, is from the Magler Creek Project. And then these two are from the Hungry Harbor Project, which we completed last year. So basically taking small culverts under Highway 401, working with Washita and putting in these big 25-foot-wide, you know, 14-foot-tall big box culverts under the highway. So obviously a very infrastructure-heavy project, meeting all the Washita standards, that kind of thing. We've also reshaped about 34 acres of floodplain habitat. This is a couple of examples from Savvy Island where we tried to target some of the invasive re-canary grass, which is a problem all throughout the river. And by lowering it, you can actually establish more native plant communities such as Wapato, Bold Rush and things like that. So a lot of marshplain alterations and then a ton of plantings, as you can expect, about 130 acres of riparian wetland and upland plantings. And then also hundreds and hundreds of acres of invasive vegetation. This is an example from West Sand Island, which we completed last year. All this beautiful yellow color is invasive gorse, which looks really pretty, but it's just a miserable plant that takes over everything, highly invasive. It's got these really nasty thorns and it's just a, it just, it just takes over the site. And so this is a giant excavator with a masticating head, like literally going through and mowing down all this invasive vegetation. And then we carve these channels into the interior for, for fish use. And then lastly, just lots of, lots of in-stream habitat, whether that's beaver dam logs, other, other basking logs, other things put into the river. And I think I'm getting close on time, so I might go through the next few sides a little quicker, just so we have enough time for, for questions at the end. But I will say, you know, another, another asset that I feel like Crest is really at the forefront in terms of the folks doing work in the Lower Columbia River is just our partnerships with other, other sponsors. So whether it's, you know, teaming up with the Army Corps of Engineers on a replanting a dredge material placement site like at Woodland Island, which we did last year, or teaming up with the Columbia Land Trust on, you know, CLT, Mike Doody Land Protection, and then Crest works on the land restoration, or us teaming up with Washington Department of Fish and Wildlife on various projects. We really, we really value those partnerships and we can kind of work big and small, both nonprofit as well as bigger, bigger public agencies. Another thing, just sticking with kind of a partnership, one thing that we're doing more and more of is teaming up with private timber companies. So for example, on the Hungry Harbor Project, we, we worked with Greenwood Resources, which was the landowner on the inside of the project. They donated a bunch of logs for the project. We, we worked with them closely to do the restoration, which was a really, really great partnership. And then on the Harlow Creek Project, which is shown with this railcar bridge right here, we worked with Hancock Forest Management. They had, they owned land with a couple of small culverts they wanted to pull out and put in bridges. So we worked with them to secure grant funding, work on the design, and then ultimately the construction with, with this private company to, to open up fish passage. And yeah, I think this is probably a good summary slide. This is a very busy slide with lots of little, lots of little arrows and polygons and things like that. But this just kind of gives an idea of, we've accomplished a lot. So the red triangles are completed projects as of 2020. The kind of pinkish hexagons are planned projects. And really, you know, not to dig in this too deep, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on in here. We've accomplished a lot, but we want to continue to just keep designing projects, keep putting projects on the ground. And so there's a lot more work to do and we're, we're planning on getting after it over the next few, few years. So I think in the interest of time, I'm just gonna skip to, skip through these last ones that are pretty text-heavy and maybe just kind of open it up for any questions or feedback or, or other thoughts that the folks have. Thank you, Tom. I see that Commissioner Thompson has a question.
Thank you so much. I just want to first appreciate Crest. I mean, Denise, your passion is so long-lived and so powerful and so sweet. The way you work partnerships to build community evidences every day with respect and affection. So that's, to use a 25-cent word, that's the ontology of it. You could be coercive, you could be antagonistic, you are not. You are positive community builders. I am so grateful for you. All right, there's my pat on the back. The second thing is, if you had a theme song, it could be John Lee Hooker's, you know, I cover the waterfront, right? Because you're covering our waterfronts. The third thing is, I'm very interested in weed control. When you pointed to invasive terrestrial species, plant species, I kept thinking, wow, how can we partner with you? Because our Soil and Water Conservation District is our weed board, they just, they aren't, they don't have the capacity for the task. I see invasive species all over. I pull Japanese knotweed out of my front yard. I mean, can, and I'm making bold to speak for my colleagues, I assume we all have some concerns about weeds. And I wonder if you're likely partners in dealing with weeds. And that's a short answer because it's kind of a placeholder in a bucket list for me. Thank you.
Yeah, first off, thank, thank you very much for the kind words and recognition. That, that means a lot, obviously, for Denise and I and our whole team. So thank you for that recognition. And I will say, to answer your question, Commissioner Thompson, about, specifically about invasive vegetation, we have, I'm thinking Denise can probably chime in with other examples. I'm thinking specifically for the West Sand Island Project, we were able to team up with Platte Soil and Water Conservation District on a weed board grant, specifically to try to target some of this invasive gorse as well as yellow flag iris. And so I agree with you. I think there's more opportunity where Crest can specifically team up with, say, Platte WCD or other Watershed Councils, Soil and Water Boards, whatever it may be, to do some of that, that invasive dredge work. We all know that it's, it's definitely an uphill battle, like it's gonna take many years of control. And, you know, there's, there's a lot of work to do, but I, I think, I like, I like your idea with that in terms of thinking future projects and future partnerships. And I think we've laid the groundwork, but we can do, we can do more in that regard. Denise, do you have anything to add specific to Commissioner Thompson?
Oh, I would just say that, that I agree that, that there's more, there's room for more partnerships. And, you know, and we've, Tom mentioned West Sand Island, which you know, and we've, uh Tom mentioned West Sand Island, which is, I think, the most recent partnership that we've had with Clatsup SWCD. But we've partnered with them on a, in, on other projects as well, where there's um very specific uh types of invasive species, where, where they bring some um addition, they, they brought some additional expertise to the table. And so I think there's continued opportunities for that. I would also say that you know, in terms of the way that we look at invasive species as well as looking, you know, at a landscape or a project, and thinking about what can we do to address invasive species in the way that we develop a project? So Tom talked about re-canary grass, which is a problem um not just across the Columbia, but across the entire Oregon coast. But one of the things that we found is that the way that we can deal with it is by designing our project to make it so that it, it gets flooded and it goes away. And so um partnerships and continuing to look at the science and other ways that we can deal with invasive vegetation, I think is something we're gonna just continue to do. Um and like Tom said, these are, these are long-term issues that, that will take a long time to address and may not, and will never fully go away. Um so it's a question of figuring out how we figure out what the highest, um what the most invasive and maybe um, not just most, not just most invasive. I'll, I'll make one more point. The gorse at West Sand Island, it was really important that we address it, because West Sand Island is one of the last locations on the Oregon uh coast with native prairie grasses, native coastal prairie grasses. And the gorse eventually would take over the island, and that, and that habitat would utterly disappear. And so that's um one of the things that we looked at in terms of taking on this project and then taking on the gorse, was the importance of protecting and, and allowing space for that native habitat to um increase across the island. Um and so partnerships and looking at projects from this perspective is one that I think is really important and one that we'll continue to do.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Denise. Thank you, Tom. I can attest that gorse is nasty stuff, and it just pops up wherever. It's kind of like Scotch Broom's ugly cousin. It's nasty, nasty. Any, Commissioner Bangs?
Uh, good morning. I was just curious in, in regards to partnerships that you guys have developed in, in the past and looking forward into the future. Do you involve your local school districts in any of these adventures, I guess I would say? I just feel like um we need to spend some time educating our, our upcoming adults in, in issues that are of concern. And so I just was curious if any school districts worked with you or if you were available to work with them?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, great, great question, Commissioner Bangs. Um personally, I've um several of those projects on Savia Island. Um, you know, I was a project manager on them, and so we actually worked with, uh it's called the Savia Island Academy, which is a K through eighth grade, um and worked with the teachers, the sixth through eighth grade uh teachers and students, doing an outdoor environmental education to those projects, doing water quality, doing different uh scientific sampling, explaining why we're doing these projects, getting the kids outside, getting them dirty, getting them involved. So that was really definitely a lot of fun, uh working with middle-aged, uh middle-school-age kids and showing them this, these projects. And Denise probably has a better answer um on stuff closer to Astoria, but I, I am thinking um that uh some of my, some of our coworkers have worked with, I believe it's Astoria High School, Denise, um with, with their science program, um and uh doing similar, whether it's uh uh water quality exercises or vegetation sampling, other things like that. And so I, I, I agree. I think, I think that's something that we can continue to do more from, or more on rapid.
Yes, Tom, we, we work with, we've worked with Lee Kane for years um and worked with his students. Uh and then often, one of the best ways that I've found for us, because we don't have uh funding really for environmental ed, but what we do have is people will call us and say, can you come in and give a presentation? We'll do that. Um and then we often will have individual students who are really interested in this work or want to do some type of project, uh whether it's, say, like an Eagle Scout um or a Boy Scout troop, or um different kind of, just, we get different kind of requests from folks around um educating students, uh around the work that we do um in watershed health and, and and salmonids. And so whenever any of those requests come in, we always figure out how we can, um like Tom was saying out at Savia Island, get students out on site or, or spend some time with them um and do presentations. Uh because I agree with you, um getting into the schools and, and having students be exposed to this type of work. Um and the importance of it is, is, I think, is key.
I see Commissioner Thompson has a question.
I see we're over time, so I'll be brief. I would encourage you to find other ways to involve other community members. I mean, I've been out on the banks of the Wakayakam with, with Dr. Brian Atwater. I'm telling you, it was a transformative experience at any stage in life. So please reach out to everybody as much as you're able, because what you're offering is just so important and so wonderful. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Thomas. Any other uh comments, questions for our presenters here, either Tom or Denise? Really appreciate the presentation, and, and it's, I think, impressive to see the scope uh and range of Crest uh on the Lower Columbia River, and uh thanks again for being here and, and kind of providing us with this comprehensive update.
Yeah, thank you very much for the invitation. Uh Chair Quela and, and all the commissioners really enjoyed it. And if you have follow-up questions, just feel free to reach out to myself or Denise. Thank you again for your
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks. We'll go back to the agenda here. We actually had uh one thing we wanted to announce with regards to the public health update. Uh although Margo wasn't able to join us, there is a Q and A session, and Monica, could you maybe just kind of outline exactly what the, the plan is, what's scheduled?
Um, I apologize. I don't know the exact time, but they are having today um just a um, a video conference. Um they're just trying to continue to get information out there, um accurate information, um and answer questions. And so I can email you all with that information as soon as I confirm with Margo. Um and then we're also um just trying to put together an FAQ sheet that we can continuously update and provide. Um the difficult part is, you know, as with everything COVID, uh the information is constantly evolving and changing. And so um we're, we're gonna try and keep that as up-to-date as best as possible, but that is something that um has been put together as of uh, I believe, Monday or Tuesday, and then we're working on getting that shared um through our social media outlets as well as um through other um media platforms.
Great. Thank you, Monica. I appreciate that. So we have, the next item is the Comprehensive Plan Update, Draft Goals, 1 through 4, and Policy Questions. We have 45 minutes scheduled for this, uh but I will uh let you know that uh most of these were driven by Commissioner Webb having questions about where we were, because she wasn't here for the work session, and unfortunately, she's not able to join us today. Um so what I thought we could do is, I'll turn it over to Gail Hendrickson, our Community Development Director, maybe give us a status report of where exactly we are. I know we're restarting um the, the comp plan uh Citizen Advisory Committee meetings, um and then take some questions if anybody from the commission has any questions. Uh but I, I know that uh it was Commissioner Webb that had a number of them, or at least had the bulk of them, and had submitted them. Um and unfortunately, she's not able to, to be here. So I'll turn it over to uh Gail Hendrickson, our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Chair Quela, and good morning, Commissioners, Gail Hendrickson, Community Development Director. Uh we restarted our comprehensive plan process in August last month. We uh have created a revised schedule where we've split up the duties of the comprehensive plan review between our planning areas, citizen advisory committees, and our Planning Commission, and our countywide citizen advisory committee. So the planning areas, uh the six of them, which include the Northeast, uh Lewis and Clark, Only Waluski, Southwest Coastal, Elsie Jewel, Seaside Rural, and Clatsup Plains, they're each reviewing their own community plans, and they are on a six-month schedule. They started in August as well. Their work is expected to be completed in December, when they'll make a formal recommendation on their community plans to the Planning Commission. And then uh in terms of the Planning Commission and the Joint Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee Meetings, those started again in August as well. We began with a brief training session uh to give them an overview of what we would be covering, kind of start giving them a grounding in the statewide planning goals, how those interrelate to Oregon revised statutes and administrative rules, and then how that trickles down to our comprehensive plan, our zoning ordinances, and also our code of uh regulations. And, you know, stressing what we are able to do, what, how things have to be consistent with each other. So, you know, if Oregon revised statutes say one thing, our comprehensive plan can't necessarily go and contradict that. So just trying to lay a foundational framework for everyone as we move forward, so that we all understand our parameters and the direction that we'll need to be moving. Uh on September 28th, we'll have another meeting of the Joint Planning Commission and Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee, and they're gonna be taking their first look at Goals 1 through 4 as well. And then our turnaround times are pretty tight, because we did uh tighten that schedule up considerably when we uh did our reboot and looked at everything again. So they'll look at, have their first look September 28th. Uh we'll make revisions as staff, and then we'll come back to them in October for the Planning Commission to make a formal recommendation on Goals 1 through 4. And we're gonna keep working through that through the next several months. Our ultimate goal is to um have the entire comprehensive plan and the community plans adopted in July of 2022. In the meantime, community development staff is going to be keeping the board very busy, because we're coming to you almost every week in a work session uh with different goals as we move forward. Uh so beginning on September 22nd, you'll be taking another look at Goal 5, and then we'll uh have a little bit of a break uh from community development, but then starting on October 20th, uh we'll be back with Goals 6, 8, and 13, and just keep working our way through that schedule. Uh when we get into 2022, we're gonna be doing a review of our community plans with the board, and that'll be in February. Uh and then in May and June, uh those eight weeks, we will be with you every week, again, going through all the goals and everything to do a final review before we bring it forward in an ordinance form to you in July. And hopefully, prior to that, we're trying to schedule a separate uh work session with the board, probably about a two-hour training, like we're doing with our Planning Commission and our Citizen Advisory Committees, just to make sure that you're getting the same information about uh each of the statewide planning goals, and making sure that you understand how things will tie into ORS, and where we will have ability to make some changes, and where we may not have the ability to change things that we may want to change, but just can't. Uh so with that, I'm gonna complete my little summary here, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. I see we have a couple of them. Commissioner Toyoka? Can't hear you, John. Yeah, still, still
Hear me now.
Yeah, now we can. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. So, you know, I've been ruminating over this comprehensive plan. I'd probably like the rest of my fellow commissioners. Talking to a lot of different constituents in the area, and a couple of input is the uh CACs, the, you know, can they align with the commissioners' districts? So then people have a direct liaison as a commissioner, so they have a voice at the County Board of Commissioners directly. So instead of a more roundabout way, this would be a more direct citizen involvement with the Board of Commissioners. So we can have, instead of six different committees, maybe five, and they align with the commissioner districts. Uh secondly, the CACs, as far as, instead of their form, their present format, a more town hall-driven format to broaden the voice once again. A lot of people are saying that, you know, I didn't even know I had a, you know, a local CAC. I don't agree with what's going on. They want a voice. But if we had, and I, and I attended some of those town hall meetings for our uh short-term rental, and I was very impressed with the quantity and quality of citizen input, and that's what we need as a commission. You know, we need input from everyone, you know, to make proper decisions that affect everyone in the, in the, in the county. So I think if we can broaden it initially, have that stronger base, so if the CACs are more of a town hall format, broadens the base of who can input the voices that are heard, it'll just strengthen uh the information, information flow all the way through the commission. And again, that realignment of uh, instead of six different CACs to five that align with each commission district, I think we then would give each of those a direct voice at the table on the Board of Commissioners. Just an input, but uh definitely welcome other info, input from other commissioners.
Yeah, actually, I like that. Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. It's a good suggestion. Commissioner Bangs?
Well, I'm definitely on Commissioner Toyoka's boat in regards to creating that direct line of communication. Um, I really feel like it would just make it less of an exclusive situation and more inclusive, because I want to hear everyone's voice, anyone who wants to talk. I want to be able to hear it. And so, and, and anyone's input. And so I, I really, I concur with Commissioner Toyoka on this, on, on creating more at the, at the CAC level, more of an, a broader base, less exclusive, more inclusive. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Okay, so we're unanimous here so far. It, it's a matter, I think, of not only um getting the input of people who are passionate and skilled and devoted long-term community activists, because we've been blessed to hear what they've had to say. They're not everybody. How do we really celebrate, not, not even tolerate, celebrate and make a concerted effort to get the voices of people who are impacted by these issues and don't have the time or energy to engage in the process that staff very thoughtfully developed? I mean, I'm grateful to staff. You did everything we could have asked you to do and more. But to restructure, as Commissioner Toyoka suggests, to really reach out, as Commissioner Bangs suggests, and I'd offer a third, a third factor in this. In my mind, we as a culture are facing some very complex and profoundly challenging issues. One of them is global climate change and species extinction. The other is the widening gap between rich and poor. So we have a situation where wealth is increasingly concentrated, and, and many people are increasingly deprived of the financial nourishment to be able to live their lives to be most fruitful, to be most productive, to really flourish. So um I don't think this is in the textbooks yet, Director Hendrickson. I'm, I want to take you into new territory, because I think we, as a county Board of Commissioners, have a commitment to balance and harmonize all of that, the economic implications, the climate implications. It's the quality of life that we're talking about. And the presentation we just heard from Crest is really a model for the engagement that treats people with affection and respect. I've listened to so many of these hearings and found it um, I want to say heartbreaking for the um, the animosity and the aggression, very subtle, very intellectual, but substantial and effective in, um I want to say poisoning the well of citizen discourse, of community interaction. What has to happen in my, in my mind as we go forward is that anybody who is involved, particularly in an appointed position from the county, has to be able to contemplate welcoming other people with affection and respect. If you have more money, if you're smarter, if you think you're right, if you think you're right, that has to be put aside. We have to welcome each other. We have to respect each other. We have to really listen effectively to each other because these challenges of climate change and species extinction and this gap, increasing gap between rich and poor, are going to take the best that everybody has to offer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. And Commissioner Banks has a question. I was going to ask also Gail's comments on what Commissioner Toyoka had suggested. If Gail had something to add to that.
No, I have nothing to add, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Banks, you had a question?
I did in regards to when we're talking about increasing or encouraging diversity. I think that when we talk about diversity, we get locked into a conversation regarding race. And I think that we need to expand that conversation to not just be race, but to be demographic, rural versus, you know, municipality, wealth versus, as LeAnn Thompson was saying, rich versus poor. I really think that we need to broaden that encouraging of diversity because it's no longer a conversation. I mean, it is a conversation about race, but it is also a conversation about, you know, how people live. And especially in our area, when we have such a strong divide between, you know, those living paycheck to paycheck and those who are salaried. So anyhow, just if we can figure out some verbiage pushing forward that could include that type of delineation. And then you asked a question of us, what role does the Board envision for the committee's citizen involvement? And should the Planning Commission continue to act as the CCI? So do you feel like we've answered that question sufficiently? Sufficiently, Gail?
Yeah, I think the Board was very clear in the direction they provided on August 3rd. As Kara Quila pointed out, we brought the item back because there were two Board members who weren't able to attend the meeting that day. And so that's why we're here.
Excellent, thank you.
Commissioner Thompson?
Thank you. Commissioner Banks, thank you for raising that specific issue. Like all of us, we've been contemplating this. We've been laboring over how do we serve as the effective members of the governing body that build community? Because each of us got elected through a political process, and that's a contest. Doesn't have to be warfare, but it's definitely a contest. There's a winner, and there's people who don't win. Then comes the shift to governing well. It's a different game. It's a different skill set. It's a different point of view. Our job as the governing body is to govern well for everybody and the people and the place. How do we do that most effectively? Of course, we need citizen input, of course. But one of my sources of consternation, I was committed to empowering my neighbors to have input into the quality of life, particularly about short-term rentals, about transient occupancy and all that it meant. So I worked for two years to get the rest of the commissioners. And there was a whole team effort. Staff, commissioners, everybody worked to put in place regulation of short-term rentals because the only place in rural Clatsop County that had regulation of short-term rentals when I took office was Arch Cape. There weren't rules for the rest of it. Okay, so we put in rules. I was committed to having a voice for citizen input. Okay, we got that by having recognized community organizations. I watch how it operates. I didn't have that in mind. I had in mind tools for community building. What I've seen happen is much more like weapons in some kind of conflict. I have listened to the, I think the phrase is "microaggression" on staff and community members. That's heartbreaking to me. That cannot be. So I'm stepping back to look at the big picture. We absolutely want citizen involvement. We want citizen involvement, I think, colleagues, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, citizen involvement in service of community building, not in declaring who's right and who's wrong and punishing somebody or hurting somebody and not subjecting our staff to a toxic work environment. So I think we have to consider the most effective community-building citizen-involvement process we can have. I think maybe we need to step back from land use planning because that's increasingly weaponized as I've seen it operate. At least, that's how I'm looking at it now. So colleagues, please help me think about this.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. Any comments? Mr. Toyoka?
I'll take it from a response to Commissioner Thompson. You got a dovetail. And I truly believe, like, when you talk about land use, and I know it's part of our comprehensive plan. You know, they talk about climate change. How do we adapt? How do we do these things? And just like Commissioner Thompson said, you know, I think even the term "climate change" has become weaponized. It's like a political tool. And a lot of people use it in a very disingenuous manner just to gain access, favor, whatever. I think if, you know, when we watched the Crest presentation, it was, you know, there was climate change discussed, but it was scientific. Here's a species. Here's a cause and effect. That is climate change to me. And what happens in our political world today, it's weaponized, and they try to use the fear tactic of a term "climate change" to gain favor. And I think, as Commissioner Thompson said, we stick to the straight and narrow and stay true and, you know, keep the politicized out. You know, we talked about redistricting. Well, Clatsop County, I believe, set the example. You know, our criteria is non-political. It's talking about retaining neighborhoods, transportation quarters. There is not a single entity and a single line item in there that says Democrat, Republican, Independent, political ideology, nothing. And I think that's what has to happen. Same with, you know, in our comprehensive plan, we talk about climate control or climate change. Same thing. We got to maintain the essence of what that is and not as a political weapon or as a tool to achieve certain planning goals or, you know, restrict planning. It's just got to be strictly, you know, by the book and by what's truly a cause and effect. So Commissioner Thompson, I hope that dovetails to what you were saying, and I agree fully.
Thank you, Commissioner Toyoka. Commissioner Banks?
I think answering future direction needed from the Board in regards to, should the topic of climate change be discussed in Goal 2? I kind of agree with the staff comment here that adoption of Goal 20 in the future, specifically addressing climate change from the state level, I think is going to occur. I don't think that we need to be preemptive about it just because we, as a county, I don't feel like are going to solve climate change. We can solve things like housing and things that are directly impacting our community and childcare and so on and so forth, and land planning. But we're not going to be able to solve a worldwide issue. And I think we should wait and take our guidance from the state when it comes to such big topics, such over, you know, just such large topics. A, we don't have the staff. We don't have the funding. And we need to take our leadership and our guidance from those who have the staff and the funding. And that's just a personal opinion, but I agree with both Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Toyoka. So in regards to the question in Goal 2 of climate change, it is addressed throughout our comprehensive plan. It is a word that is used, just like in the Crest presentation. I think we all can agree that the climate is changing, that there is climate change. It's just the role as a county and the stance that we take as a county should be dovetailed from the state and dovetailed from the federal government. That's just my opinion.
Mr. Toyoka?
Yeah, I think we still have to temper that with, I think, again, noting that climate change terminology, even at Salem, is very weaponized. We have to take it from our rural Clatsop County standpoint and still be proactive in facts and how it affects rural counties, especially since, you know, natural resource, you know, abundant counties like Clatsop County. So I think the same perceptions in Salem do not apply to what happens out here. So if we totally rely upon that, I think we failed our constituents. I think we must maintain vigilance and be proactive.
Commissioner Thompson?
So I want to bring some truisms that guide me. My son, that environmental economist mom, it all mixes in the stratosphere. The only thing that works is worldwide climate accord. So yes, we have to do what we can here on the ground, in the water, with the people in Clatsop County. And the real answer has to be worldwide climate accord. So that's one thing. The other thing is, I really believe if we want to save the planet, we have to love the people. It doesn't work to be antagonistic, to see this as a form of warfare. We really have to listen to each other with affection and respect. How do we do that? That's what I see as the critical elements going forward. Yes, look at science. Commissioner Toyoka, absolutely, look at science. Yes, Commissioner Bangs, integrate what's happening in Salem. But I'll tell you, at the Association of Oregon Counties on Monday, I spoke briefly with the chair and with the county manager because there was a conflict there around COVID issues. And there was a movement to polarize us and divide us as AOC. The antidote was to table the issue, to put it aside until we could listen to each other more effectively. The vote on that motion to table so we didn't destroy the organization and our relationships with each other was 20 to 19. Dear colleagues, dear neighbors, dear friends, we are so sharply and deeply divided. Our challenge is to be able to collaborate. It will take the best we have from all of us to address these. And I just want us to keep focused on building community here and wider everywhere. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Thompson. I appreciate your wise words there and your efforts with AOC. And I have to agree with what my colleagues have expressed here today. Commissioner Banks?
I'm just looking further through Goal 2, and I'm just noticing some concerning statements that I brought forth in the first meeting that we had in Goals 1 through 4. And so I'm just curious as to, are they still staying in here? Or what's going on?
No, Commissioner Banks, we did receive your comments. But knowing that we were coming back to obtain additional comments, which maybe we weren't quite as successful as we were aiming for today, we didn't go through and create a third draft to go back two weeks later and make a fourth draft. So it was just more efficiency on staff part. But your comments have been obtained and noted.
Commissioner Thompson?
So just to be clear, Director Henrickson, what you're asking of me and every other commissioner is to do what Commissioner Bangs has probably already done way ahead of me, to go through line by line, word by word, and give you feedback. Is that what you're asking for?
Our intent as staff, Commissioner Thompson, was really to get the direction on the big policy issues. If you do have comments on other sections or more detailed comments, please. And also, anyone in the public, we welcome feedback at any time. We take written comments. You can call me. You can email me. You can send us a letter. Send us a telegram, if such things still exist. But yes, really, we're looking as staff just more on the big policy direction at this point.
Commissioner Toyoka?
Since we're in Goal 2, just for Gail and Seth, you know, I don't know if it was noted before, but when we talked about land use, you know, as far as they talked about climate change and how does it affect land use in our area? Just wanted to ensure that we had the latest data, not 40-year-old delineations. And we can't make land use decisions based on, you know, old data. So we wanted to make sure we had pertinent data.
Yeah, the most recent information that's very specific to Clatsop County is from the Oregon Climate Change Research Institute. And they specifically released a report in 2019 that looks at Clatsop County as a standalone community. So it is data very specific to us. It's two years old, but that's the most recent we have.
Because I was looking at some of those wetland delineations, and some are quite old and not descriptive of what we are today.
Garbage in, garbage out?
So since we had this work session item really for Commissioner Webb's input and comments, how do we want to proceed here? Commissioner Thompson?
Well, I definitely want to hear what Commissioner Webb has to say. So maybe we can continue this and reschedule when she's available because I know this is deeply, deeply important to her. And I don't want to miss her. I don't want to leave her out.
And I agree with Commissioner Thompson. Commissioner Banks?
I agree with Commissioner Thompson to a point just because, I mean, we've had this opportunity once. We've had this opportunity twice. I don't know what's going on in her life. And I want to remain open to potentially rescheduling this yet again. But, I mean, as we all know, time is valuable. And I don't want to end up rescheduling it and then having her not show up again. And so for me, I'm, I mean, can we have a draft of what Commissioner Webb? Like, I don't know. I just feel like we need to move forward. And I want to also remain graceful. But at the same time, we can't remain in a holding pattern with something that we've been in a holding pattern on for quite some time. So it's just a thought process. I do want to remain graceful, but at the same time, time is valuable. I have to acknowledge that because I'm in the middle of a planning prep period here at school. And so, like, I'm, yeah.
Commissioner Toyoka?
I don't know if it's possible for Commissioner Webb to work with staff. I know, Monica, you guys are already tasked heavily, but maybe condense some notes on the different issues or work directly with Gail, putting together some notes that we can distribute to the Board, and we can all then see Commissioner Webb's viewpoints on the different points within the comprehensive plan that she asked for discussion. We can do that, you know, way ahead of time before our next meeting. Then we all know where, what points Commissioner Webb wants to discuss. It'd be more directed.
What an elegant solution that addresses everyone's opinion. Nice. I'd support that.
Just to confirm what you're asking, Commissioner, is that you would like staff to work with Commissioner Webb to on Goal 1 through 4 in regards to her questions or comments, and then incorporate her questions and comments in with any others that we've received from all of you, and then provide that out to the Board for review prior to coming back. And perhaps, if there is time at another meeting where we're discussing other goals, be able to kind of touch on those topics?
That would be perfect.
You wrote all that down, Gail? You wrote all that down, Gail?
I can do some outreach to Commissioner Webb as well, and I spoke with, I did speak with her last week. And so I would like to kind of give her, you know, give her a call and get an opportunity to, for her to, to, uh, give me some feedback and, and provide it to, to the staff. Any, any other comments, questions? Anything from staff? Commissioner Banks?
I mean, I guess I just have a, a quick question for Gail. You have four of us here, um, and you've kind of received feedback from what I assume is, is all four of us. Um, and so you, and just, this is, I think, a clarification more than anything. So you're going to receive feedback or you have received back, feedback from, from the fifth sitting commissioner. And then we are going to come together again for Goals One through Four after having read through everything and, and then hopefully develop a, a draft. I mean, I don't think all of us are going to agree on it. I mean, I'm, I'm probably 100% sure that all of us are not going to 100% agree with the draft that we come out with. Um, like, I guess I'm just confused by the process. I want Pam's feedback, but how, how do we get past feedback and into actual draft? Does that make sense, what I'm asking?
Yes, it does. So my plan, uh, prior to today's meeting, or up until today's meeting, was that I would take the feedback I received from the commissioners today, incorporate that, uh, with your previous feedback from August 3rd, and that would be the draft of Goals One through Four that would be presented to the Joint Planning Commission, Countywide Citizen Advisory Committee on September 28th. Um, at this point, because I don't have feedback from Commissioner Webb, I can only work on the comments that I've received to date from the board, and will incorporate those into the draft that goes to the, uh, September 28th meeting. That draft will get reviewed again by the Planning Commission and the Joint, uh, Countywide CAC. They'll make additional recommendations, uh, which will then get incorporated into the final draft that goes to the Planning Commission in October. And I guess the question to the board is if, and to Monica, uh, if we can schedule this sometime between their September 28th review and when it's due back to them on October 14th at the Planning Commission, um, I'll, I'll work with Monica on that. It's a pretty tight schedule, um, but we'll see if we can bring it back. Otherwise, we'll just shift our schedule a bit, so.
Thank you. I, that, my question was long-winded. I just wanted to figure out how we were going to be doing this because it just seems like we're going to be redeveloping and adding more parts to the, to, I just got done with a, a cute little monster unit. So we're adding more arms and legs and eyeballs and teeth and ears to our little monster, and then we're going to have to remove a few eyeballs, teeth and ears and mouths from that monster again. I, it makes sense now. Thank you, sorry.
That's okay. My answer was also long-winded, so.
Well, I'm comfortable with the way we're going forward. I know that it's, uh, it's not always pretty, but, um, certainly we want to make sure that, uh, we get adequate input from everyone and, um, that we continue the process as we started. So, thank you, Gail. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we don't have any other items on the agenda. Uh, Monica, do we have anything else that we need to discuss?
I would just add, um, the reason Margaret wasn't here is because the conference was taking place at 10:00 AM, so that's why she wasn't able to be present. It was, um, for the media as well as invited guests, and it is being recorded. And once that recording is, um, updated, then it'll get uploaded to the website and, and available for people to review there.
That's great. Thank you, Monica, for that information. Teresa?
Uh, yes. Did you want to mention those letters of support to, for the board?
Thank you. Yes, I have heard from, um, three commissioners, um, Commissioner Toyoka and Commissioner Webb. Um, I wanted to confirm if you are in support of Commissioner Quila signing the, um, the letter of support that was, okay, perfect. Thank you. And so Commissioner, we will just need you to come by at some point in time or else, um, work with Teresa to get those signed.
I can come by this afternoon to get it done. Okay. Commissioner Banks?
Um, I don't know if we have tech support on here somewhere, but I will need to be coming by later this afternoon. Apparently my computers, uh, uh, earphone jack or whatever isn't working, so.
I can let IT know that you'll be stopping by.
Yeah, it'll be after school. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, any other items for the good of the order here? Okay, if not, thank you very much, everyone. Uh, have a good rest of your Wednesday and a good rest of your week. Thank you. Bye-bye.